That's a great.
But.
You know, one is going to be done. Most of those people. They're gonna be.
Anybody ready? It's, uh.
Go ahead.
It's eight thirty, uh, start me with pledges leaving.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody that? Schedule anything? Hearing none, move on, approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
There is a cellular authorization that I passed out this morning to add to the consent agenda. And then at ten o'clock, Lynn Brenn with SDPAA was going to join us for liability insurance review, and she's still going to be joining us but via telephone this morning instead of driving up from Sioux Falls due to the weather. That's all I have.
Yeah. Prove the agenda is read. Consent agenda items, approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of the human services report.
Move approval.
Second.
They have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, see an eye?
Eye.
Eye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Routine business, approval of claims.
Second.
They have a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Miller?
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports, uh, start with county development.
Good morning.
Morning, Bob.
On the county development side of the house, starting off, this is the first anniversary of the Brush Lake incident. I was contacted by the family yesterday, and they wanted me to relay the thanks to all the first responders that assisted in that. That was a, you know, over a hundred day search, and, uh, they wanted, uh, they wanted to send their thanks to the first responders that assisted during the difficult time that that was. Next up, November twenty-two, we had a safety committee meeting in the, in the county. The biggest thing that came out of that is if you've got a kid spelled K-I-D-D-E fire extinguisher that's got a plastic head on it, you might wanna go on the internet and type, type the serial number in to see if it's one of the recalled ones. That, that particular brand of fire extinguisher is in a lot of homes and in a lot of vehicles, not county vehicles, but, but civilian vehicles, and if there is a recall on it, it sounds like when you need it the most, it decides not to work. And, um, so there is a recall on it, and, and that was the, the most important thing that come out of the meeting. The same day, I had an ordinance review with the deputy state's attorney and of course, Commissioner Pierce. November twenty-eighth, we had a tabletop exercise at the United Living Community Facility that went well. November twenty-eighth, I had another ordinance review with the deputy state's attorney. November twenty-ninth, all three of my, myself and my two other department employees attended the workplace diversity and inclusion training, and that was well received by all that took it. Tomorrow, I have an exercise scheduled up at Buffalo Ridge at five P.M. Looks like we have good weather for it. December seventh, this is a very opportune meeting, we have a blizzard meeting in Mitchell. Either Richard, I, or both of us will attend that, depending on what's going on that morning. December eleven through twelve, I'm sending Richard out to a class in peer called Recovery, the local government role. And, uh, next week, pending funding, there'll be a gas pipeline meeting in Washington, and I'll be attending. The following week, there is a public information officers training course in Alabama, and I did state within, again, pending funding, but it looks like FEMA's got their funding, but the Department of Transportation does not, so the, the pending funding may not apply on that one. I was notified last couple of days that the Blue Water Tower antenna has been lowered to meet FFA requirements, and that we're good to go there, and that the Northern Tower repeater may have to move due to contact contractual reasons. They're losing their lease on the Northern Tower, so they're gonna have to probably bring the Northern Tower down and relocate it, and they're going, they're in the process of looking for a location that's gonna benefit us actually in the long run probably, and hope, hopefully give us better communications between White and Bruce, the fire department's up in White and Bruce. I'll keep you informed on that one. I was asked about Midary Drainage. Once again, I'm, I'm in contact with, uh, Midary Township, and we haven't gotten anything put together yet where we can get our, our engineers on contract yet. We're, we're still working that case, and soon as I get a hold of everyone, we'll, we'll bring that back to you and, and set up a contract with, with our engineering firm. I have a letter in the, I attached a letter in the packet for you. I wrote a letter to the Brookings County Planning Commission. After the last county commission meeting, I was requested to submit a written recommendation pertaining to whether, uh, conditional use permit two zero zero five C U zero one nine on a gravel, sand gravel quarry operation was, uh, valid or if it expired due to inactivity. I wrote the letter, submitted it in your file, and I will also give that to the Brookings County Planning and zoning meeting tonight at seven during our regularly scheduled meeting. Was there any questions on that, on the contents of the letter, or being administrative, I, we, we discussed this with the, with the deputy state's attorney in the office, and, that's my decision, it is an appealable decision, and if anyone disagrees with the decision, it can be appealed to the Brookings County Board of Adjustment. And all they have to do is contact my office. My office manager, Ray Lynn Maher, will, will take the appeal, and we'll start the process in, in the appeal. And that is all I have, any questions?
Any questions, Bob? Ms. Pierce?
Could you tell us what's happening with the drainage issue in Midary Township?
Yes, ma'am. I've been in contact with Midary Township officials, and I'm waiting for their contact back to me to explain what they, they, they had some stuff on, on a checklist that they had to go through that they had gotten from the Natural Conservation Resource District, and once all that's completed, then we'll get it all assembled together, and then we'll, we'll come back through you guys to get a contract with our engineering firm to keep proceeding on that.
I think they were looking at the water lea, or easements, weren't they?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One thing I would ask, please stand top of that repeater situation so that we don't lose the little bit that we have up there for those first responders.
Yeah, the, the radio company that's got the, that we got the contract with the antenna on, he's concerned through it, and he, he knows he's, he went up and looked, the same day he, he fixed the antenna for us on the blue tower, he went up and did some preliminary research, and he's supposed to be going back up again. I don't know if it was yesterday, hopefully it wasn't yesterday he was up there, but he, he is gonna go up and look at it.
Is the north tower, is, where's that located again?
Just north of the owner's property, you've got the, you've got the federal substation just to the north of us, it's the property just to the north of that.
Cause at one time, they were talking about the rural water tower up there northeast of White, or north, yeah, northeast.
Okay, maybe I'll shoot them an email afterwards and, and.
I just would caution us to stay on top of that, that's not something that can be dropped.
You said north of White or east of White?
Northeast.
Northeast. Okay, I'll contact them, yes, ma'am, I'll, I'll. Thank you.
Vicki?
Good morning. To give you an update on the finance office, um, all of our levies and special assessments are into peer and all our reports, and there was one question on the Arlington City levy that we had to change, um, just of a minute amount, but other than that, everything is a go. We haven't gotten the official, um, okie dokie yet from peer that we can go ahead and, and print tax notices, but it's close to that. Next week, we will be publishing all the delinquent taxes and mobile homes and buildings on lease sites, they will be in the, all the county papers next Thursday, and we will have a, be having our tax certificate auction on December eighteenth at nine o'clock in the conference room next to our office. Um, got together last Tuesday with SDSU and Larry and signed papers for the bonds for SDSU. We've been working with different departments and Stacy on budgets and the supplemental budget hearing that you will give me authorization to publish, and that is going to be for, um, wheel tax and domestic abuse, and both of those will be over budget, and the reason for that is because we've received more revenue in than what we had budgeted. So, the, all the revenue we receive in on those two funds go out again, so we have to have the supplemental budget hearing to be able to give that money out. And I have been in contact with the state on the kiosk, I did, uh, mention out at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center, and they are looking at that, and they do have another place in mind too, they didn't really give me any details, but hopefully we'll be hearing about that so we can get that back in place someplace in Brookings, so, so I am working with them on that. Any questions that you have? Thanks.
Thank you. Marty?
Good morning.
Morning.
I brought Bart Zwiebe in with me to, uh, discuss some issues in the jail. Uh, just first of all, I think we made someone mad yesterday cause that storm hit us pretty good. Uh, I'm amazed that we made it through it as, as well as we did. We had eleven, eleven incidences that we handled through the office during the bulk of, uh, the winds and so forth. Lucky, four accidents, minor accidents, a lot of them were slide-ins, uh, report of a car going the wrong way between Volga and, and, um, uh, Brookings, uh, time the deputy was trying to locate it, we never did locate the car, so evidently it made it, made it wherever it was going, so, but, uh, visibility was zero out there, I mean, it's, you couldn't see your hand in front of your face there part of the time. The other thing is, uh, with the jail, uh, staying busy, we have, um, a hundred and thirty-eight on the twenty-four-seven program, we have forty-five people coming in twice a day, so that's ninety individuals that come in once a day, uh, plus then we have, uh, twenty on SCRAM, well, actually, we have thirty-five on SCRAM. And, uh, we have fifty-one coming in once a week to do UAs, so it's continuing to stay busy on the twenty-four-seven program. The problem we're getting, and I'll, if, if you want more explanation, um, we can do that, is we're having trouble with classification of inmates. I have twenty, we have twenty-two inmates upstairs in the, in, in non-secured open area. It's just a big dorm room with beds on one side and an open area, I have twenty-two people up there, and they don't always get along. Downstairs, we've, we're running into an issue with classification with, uh, sex offenders, and we had to, uh, move one, we tried to get him into Madison, Madison is full, got him into Falk, Falk's got a brand-new jail, so when we go back up there, me and Bart, Bart and myself are gonna go so we can tour that jail, but we did take one up to Falk County, uh, and housed there, it's eighty-five dollars a day. He's already gonna go to the penitentiary, it's just that we're waiting for the pre-sentence investigation, and that takes up to six weeks to do, so, but the problem is, is that I had no space for him. There was, uh, uh, if, uh, in, in the cell that, that we were gonna do it, there was a chance of, of somebody getting hurt, and I, we can kinda explain our classification if you want, but, uh, go ahead.
You said eighty-five dollars?
Eighty-five dollars a day, yes.
Okay, and that's with the new jail?
That's theirs, yeah, yeah.
That's their charge, okay.
Yep, yep, I'm sorry, I.
No, it's okay, I.
No, it's eighty-five dollars a day, we took him there Monday, I don't know how long we're gonna have to, both, he's under court order, so I'm under court order to have him without, in, in, uh, being in a separate place from other inmates. We tried to see if the judge, cause since he's been sentenced, we tried to get that, Bart worked with the judge to see if we, the judge says no, we had to follow his order.
What we, what we've got, and with the sex offenders right now, is I've got three in custody that are all involved in the same case, and the judge put out an order that all three of them cannot have contact with one another. Well, I've got, as you know, I've got five cells downstairs, one takes up our female population, and then I've got four other cells. So, I had the three sex offenders, I had them separate between three of the cells, uh, well, then, I had problems with our female population of getting into fights, so I had to split our female population apart, I had to empty out one of our male cells to create a second female cell. Well, then, I got a guy, but, uh, one of our sex offenders came back from the Human Service Center where he spent a couple of weeks, and the only spot I had to put him back into was our larger of the male cells, while there was people in there that knew who he was and what he was charged with, they didn't want him in there, or things were, bad was gonna happen. Well, I've only got two other cells to use, and both of them have his co-defendants in it. So what do I do? So I took one of the other two, and that was who we sent up to Falk County, and then I put him in that same cell then. Lot of miles, and it's just, it's, I'm hoping all three of these cases get done sooner, or at least a couple of them should be done soon, uh, their sentencing dates, uh, the one we've got in Falk is, uh, this month, about mid-month, he should be sentenced, and I'm sure he'll be on the way out of here, and then the, the other gem, or the other guy will be, um, sentenced in January, which will leave us with just one, and I usually don't have any problems with him, so, but that's the struggles we're having right now is just with the increase in our, we've, we've had a little bit of a change in our inmate population too, where we've got, uh, we did, we actually have more in for assault when you did that count yesterday.
Well, there's twenty-two in there for methamphetamine, and, but, then the other ones are mostly assault.
Yeah, so we've, we've, we've got almost more people in for assault-type charges, including sex offenses, um, those, those kind of inmates are harder to manage than our ones in for drugs, and, and trying to keep them at peace in the jail. So, it does a lot of struggling for, for our classification, and not just classification, but trying to put them where they're gonna get along with one another, so they don't get into a fight, and then we're on the way to the hospital.
And I just wanted, I just wanted just to bring up, you know, you know, a lot of times, out of sight, out of mind, because a lot of people don't know what's going on in the jail, but I gotta commend the jail staff, I think that CIT training that we, we sent to, um, cause I heard a lot of yelling, yelling back in the jail the other day, Monday, was it? And I went back there, and two of his staff was handling the inmate and using some of those techniques, and they brought him right down and, uh, settled him down, uh, so, we're, we're dealing with those things, and the reason I bring it up is, is, you know, I know where we're at, I know that you guys were working on, that, part of it is because I'm spending extra money too, so I don't wanna, I wanna, I want the commission to know that we're spending extra money to, to house somewhere else, or you're aware of that, for supplement if we need it, and then the other thing is just for education too, so if the public asks about our jail expansion, you can kinda tell them where we're at. Um, it, it, you know, basically, we got beds, it's that I can't use them, because if I have two females in one four-man cell, then I'm short two beds for males, you know, so that's where, and then upstairs, it's, it's because they're all in the big areas, so we try to put the less violent or the ones that we hope will get along upstairs, but, you know, previously, in a work release, most of them would be gone during the day working, there might be only four or five up there, well, now I have twenty-two who are up there all day long, twelve dot, twelve hours, or twenty-four hours, you know, day in and day out, so that's what creates some, some pa, some problems up there, but the main reason is just to let you know, gonna have to spend some extra money to house, just to make it work, so, we'll leave it as that, so unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bart.
Dick?
Yeah. I would like that.
Good morning. Um, well, they kinda took away my light at the end of the tunnel, I thought the snow and ice turned out better than expected. I, I was very happy that it was just in sheltered areas and whatever, but visibility was extremely limited to zero. Um, the crew's been busy cutting trees in the right-of-way, they've also been cleaning ditches to improve drainage, and our culvert work is pretty much done for two thousand seventeen, we finished that up early last week. Uh, I've been working with Jeff and Linda to start compiling some of our specifications for two thousand and eighteen supplies and materials, and we don't bid that until like the end of, uh, February, but it's always good to visit with vendors, see what's available, and, uh, take a look at, uh, what we did in the past and what we might wanna do differently in the future. Uh, just a reminder, uh, December nineteenth, Doug Wessel and Colin Zwoski, uh, will be here to talk bridges and structures under twenty feet, I hope everybody got their study of inspection report. Um, the big grants are, applications are due January first, and, uh, so what that'll mean, when, when Doug and Colin come, they wanna, uh, let you people, uh, be aware of all the scenarios and what, uh, we are looking at as far as, uh, the application, and also on that agenda for that day will be to pass the resolution to apply for these grants. So it's getting kinda cramped into, uh, one meeting, but I think we're pretty well aware of what will be, uh, presented, and also, it'd be, just be a, a real good time if there's anything that, that, um, the board would like clarified, or, uh, was wondering about as far as deadlines or timelines, that, that would be an excellent time to ask them. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Dick?
And we did put the, um, small structures report that Dick provided, I have the hard copy in my office too for a little while longer, I think you could probably take that back, cause we use the electronic file and put it in Dropbox, so, it's there if you wanna review it.
Yep, go ahead. Yep. Put your mic on, there you go.
There we go. On a positive note, East Central Behavioral Health, we are now going to, on Thursday mornings from eight to noon, they are sending a counselor over, and, uh, to help, hopefully that, uh, we're gonna, uh, have a space available for the counselor at the jail, and, uh, have, inmates will have the opportunity to, to visit with the counselor, um, especially because of the, uh, inmates with the methamphetamine chemical dependency side, and, and also with some mental illness side and those types of things, and it's gonna be every Thursday, gonna come in from eight to, to noon. Now, uh, jail administrator's gonna send out to all the attorneys that this is available at the jail now, I talked to one attorney yesterday, because I can't really force inmates unless there's some type of court order to go in and talk to the counselor, so basically what you do, you go around to the cells and say, hey, do you wanna talk to a counselor? Many times, they say no, but the attorneys, that the attorney I talked to says, I can help facilitate that with, with my clients, and say, it is your best interest to go in and visit with the counselor, you know, that's gonna help these individuals when they go to court and say, hey, while they were in jail, they did have, they've been talking with the counselor and stuff, so, at least that attorney's on board, and, and that way we can, you know, maybe help these individuals that are struggling with, um, addiction and so forth, and, and so I think it's gonna be a positive, a positive thing for us, so, I thought I'd bring it up, make sure.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we do have a nine o'clock, but I'll move down to regular business. Uh, letter A, first reading of ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero six, an ordinance establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speeds, speed limit upon a portion of County Road twenty-three. Uh, the second reading will be, the second reading in public hearing will be on January second, two thousand and eighteen, at nine thirty A.M. And also, letter B, first reading of ordinance number two zero one seven dash zero seven, an ordinance establishing a forty-five mile per hour speed limit upon a portion of County Road twenty-three, uh, second reading in public hearing on January second, two thousand and eighteen, at nine forty A.M. Move on to letter C, action to approve, resolution number seventeen dash five two, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a dump body, hoist, hydraulics, truck plow hitch with options, reversible plow, mid-mount, ten-foot wing, assist axle, pup pole plate, and sand and spreader, based upon the price established through the Brookings County bid process.
Move approval.
I have a motion in second, any discussion, background, Dick, you have any?
This was just to get the ball rolling again for two thousand and eighteen, uh, since we had such a long, uh, laytime for two thousand and seventeen, um, and basically, the vendors all agreed to honor our two thousand and seventeen bid, and so, it made sense for us to get the ball rolling and purchase off our current bid.
So this will come out of the two thousand and eighteen budget then?
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Hearing none, call the rule, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to approve agreement number seventeen dash eight four, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Kurt Nelson.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion in second, discussion? This, the river bridge down south?
Yes, it'll be for, the same landowner owns the land for two thirty-eight and two thirty-nine, and. And this is just, uh, one of our, uh, items we've got to address.
Okay. Call a roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve agreement number 17-85, an agreement for voluntary right-of-way donation between Brookings County and Kurt Nelson.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call a roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, X. Letter F, action to approve agreement number 17-86, a partner agreement between Brookings County, Minnehaw County and Lutheran So- Social Services Per diem to house youth in both the secure and non-secure section of the Minnehaw County Regional Juvenile Detention Center, as well as shelter care being operated by Lutheran Social Services.
Move approval.
I have a motion of second, discussion? Hearing none, call a roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, it is nine o'clock. Uh, presentation of highway department awards.
Believe it or not, we never brought the awards. I can, I can run and get them. They're just a little black thing. Yeah. That's fine. Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, we'll go back to, uh, letter G, action to approve agreement number 17-87, a state of South Dakota consultant contract provisions of community health services between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Health, of healthy family and community health, child and family services.
Move approval.
Second.
And a motion of second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, call a roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter H, action to approve agreement number 17-88, a lease renewal agreement between Brookings County and Denwill Investments Incorporated for the Community Health Nurses Office Space.
Move approval.
I have a motion of second, discussion on this item?
These, these two items both have to do with the community health nurses. Uh, one is that we continue to provide a port, the first one that we just voted in was we provide a portion of the money that goes to the community health nurse. And this one is where we house them, their, their office.
We currently have one office out there that we lease.
Well, it's more than one office.
Right.
There is an office space that they also lease back from us within that, the office space that we lease.
Right.
So they can sublease from us to a different office of the state. So.
Call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter I, action approved and authorized, Chairperson Johnson, sign a letter of support for Bennett County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion of second, uh, as you can see, uh, uh, the Brookings County Commission is in support of Bennett County, South Dakota's efforts in trying to find solutions for counties trying to provide county services when they have taxes amp trust lands that do not pay property tax. The commission is aware of hardship counties face when their primary form of revenue is not required to be paid. However, the services they provide are still expected to continue. If a county were to go bankrupt, the state would realign county boundaries to restore solvency. The cost to provide county services to the tax exempt land would then shift to other counties. This is a federal issue that needs attention. Uh, I think this comes through our association. They requested, uh, just support, uh, get this passed. Call the roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter J, action to transfer 105,000 of cash from 301-4-911-4296 to 304-3-3710000.
This is, you passed a supplemental budget resolution, um, earlier that is, that establishes the budget for the 304, the new 304 fund, the jail expansion fund. What we forgot to do at the time was also transfer the cash from 301, the building fund where we have some reserves set aside to, to 304. So we did the budget piece, now this is the cash part of that. So this is to move the cash into that fund. So we are going to, or the finance office will now take any expenses that we have incurred to date for that project, architectural fees that we have incurred and put them, that it looks like they've been, you know, expensed now out of that 304 fund instead of, we've been taking out, uh, most of it out of the general fund, the commissioner's professional services line. So all of the costs then now will be reflected out of that 304 fund moving forward for jail expansion. So this is just kind of a second piece to what we've already started.
Move approval.
Second.
Need a motion of second, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, call a roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter K, action to authorize the finance office to publish a notice for supplemental budget hearing.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion of second.
And Vicki had just mentioned as part of her report too, what the supplemental budget will be for is for, uh, wheel tax in the 201 Highway Road and Bridge Fund as well as the, um, domestic abuse fund. And what we do is we budget so much revenue and so much expense in a year in our budget for those. Basically those are pass-through dollars for the most part. What we get in goes back out. What happened this year is we've gotten more revenue in, a good problem to have versus what we budgeted as an expense to be paid out to the different entities. So what we are going to do is just increase those expense lines so that it doesn't look like we've overspent those expense lines. It really isn't adding an expense to those budgets. What it is, is just, it's, it's allowing us to pay out the revenue that we've received without it looking like those budgets have been over, overspent basically. So. And we, we will notice that and then have that hearing, I believe on the 19th.
I have a motion. Call a roll please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter L, action to approve applicants for volunteer board appointments. Number one, extension board, we have, uh, three applicants. And we need one individual, correct?
Correct. The, the rest of these were appointed, um, several weeks ago when we made the, all of the initial appointments, I think at the beginning of November. And there was one position on the extension board that we had six positions and only received five applications initially. So we republished, now we receive three additional applications for that final position on the board.
I'd like to recommend that we nominate Stuart Hauptman. Rhonda Stewart Hauptman.
Second.
I have a motion of second for Rhonda Stewart Hauptman for extension board. Discussion?
And she's not been on the extension board previously, is that correct?
That's great.
So we'd have some new ideas and.
Call the roll please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item two, planning zoning commission, District Three.
There was just the one application for the one position.
I move that we nominate Michael McHugh.
Second.
I have a motion of second.
His address is Minnesota, obviously, and everything seems to be the Minnesota address and, and phone numbers and, and so he's.
He, he does live in South Dakota.
Right.
There are portions of South Dakota, both near the Hendricks area as well as Lake Benton, I believe, that have Minnesota addresses, but there, the, the residence is located in South Dakota.
Clarify.
And motion of second, call a roll please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number three, housing and redevelopment commission documents.
And again, just the one applicant for the one position on that board.
I'll move that we appoint Michael Holzer. Second.
I have a motion of second, I call a roll please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Stacy, you want to? Mission Department Director report? You want to do that or you want to wait till?
No, I can, I can do that and we're, we're zipping right along today. In my report, uh, or with my report, I had the, hopefully the final version of the 2018 calendar. I think at the last meeting, we discussed a couple date changes. The June date, uh, that first Tuesday in June from moving it from the fifth to the seventh to accommodate the canvas of the June primary, which is on June 5th. And then in November, we are going to keep a reg, the regular commission meeting scheduled for November 6th and then have the canvas only scheduled for, uh, November 8th. And that's partially due to my absence because I have a conference that I will be at on the 7th and the 8th, uh, next year. So if you are okay with that, I will take this and get it distributed out to department heads.
Does everybody? I mean, Leanne had an issue later in the year, but it might change by then or?
Right. And we did have the archery range representative on the BCOAC Advisory Board, John Ruffalo, did submit his resignation. Uh, the commission, as you recall, does some, um, make those appointments to that board. So my recommendation would be that we advertise that position today. We'll get on that and right away, either this morning or this afternoon, get that out. We'll have it open for two weeks until the 19th and then we'll appoint that position on, we have, have that end of the year wrap-up meeting on the 28th of December. So we'll be able to get that appointed before year end. If you're okay with that, we will proceed in that direction. Go seek applications for that position on the board. Yes?
Yep.
To go back to Larry's question, it was my understanding from our last conversation that the commission didn't want to change that July date. That won't change for me, but, but that was everybody's position, is that right?
And then, um, work comp and volunteers, I've had a, kind of a lengthy discussion about volunteers and how we cover, um, volunteers through the county's work comp policy. We have always done this by simply listing the volunteers in our minutes. We've done this historically for the RSVP volunteers, uh, and the sheriff's department as well as our storm spotters. And now we have, uh, volunteers in the form of, um, committee members and archery range, our, our, our range safety officers out at the BCOAC now. So at the last minute, we did have, I received a list from, um, the director, Robert Contreras. And so we listed those individuals in the, in the minutes. Now there, I think we had some discussion, you know, Ryan had brought up that we could, we should probably look at this some. So I did some looking at that and provided a statute that speaks to that. And we are responsible for them just as they would be an employee in a work comp situation. That being said, I still think that the county should cover, it's my recommendation, that we continue to cover volunteers in the same way we have historically done. And we have a new set of volunteers out there, but I think that that's something that the county should continue to do. And that being said, Brad Wilson with, um, the, with insurance benefits, he's kind of our work comp, um, our work comp guy, I guess for lack of a better term. He is going to be coming in February, I believe. Can't remember if I had that date. I, I have it, I don't think I have it in front of me, but he is coming, I believe at the first meeting in February to just give an overview of our work comp, um, policy. And if you have any questions related to this, um, or anything else with work comp, he'll be here. Similar to with, you know, we have Lynn Bren joining us today to discuss liability insurance. So he will be here in February if you have any questions that you would like to ask of him then. That being said, you know, we've, we have these individuals listed. If you, if the board decides that you don't want to cover them, it, it would take specific board action, would need to be an agenda item and an action item to say, we are no longer covering volunteers. And you can do it for all our part. You can cover some and not others. It's really completely, this part of it is really, um, board discretion.
Do we pay a premium per volunteer?
I don't believe so, no.
So it doesn't, we pay one premium that covers all of our volunteers?
Yes, as long.
You know how much that is?
I don't right off the top of my head, no. So I can look and get that information for you, but I, um, so it's just kind of food for thought, I guess, unless anyone has very strong feelings one way or another right now.
Well, I, why wouldn't we cover them? That's my thought.
And I'm, I guess my question is, do we have all of our volunteers listed? That, that's really my question. Is there any group that we're missing in there?
Throughout the year, you can add people throughout the year. If you have new volunteers, come on, you just simply list them in the minutes again. Um, I think Marty's very, very good about getting, you know, any new RSVP, RSVP people that he has maybe come throughout the year. He's very good about getting those. The storm spotters, I don't really think they, I don't think they've changed much throughout the year, but we do it, we do it annually. And like I said, I just received the list from, um, Mr. Contreras last, or two me, uh, I mean, two weeks ago, for the meeting two weeks ago, so.
But we do not include 4H volunteers in there?
No.
And why is that?
That's what I was going to ask.
Comes through extension.
Is it, are they covered under extension?
I think so.
Can, can you confirm that?
Yeah, I can.
I, I guess my, my thought is, I just want to make sure that that, we had an incident and we had a 4H volunteer that got hurt and an OAC range officer that got hurt. And we had one covered and not the other covered. This would not be a good situation, so let's just.
Yeah, I can verify that. I can visit with.
Is that?
And I think the organizations, like for example, if, uh, Joad has a volunteer that's running their class and they would get hurt, they would be cut, covered under Joad. If there's a volunteer that is running, uh, OAC program, uh, some type of a program and they got hurt, they had been volunteering for us, then we would cover them. Similar to the 4H situation, that if they're running a 4H program and working on the 4H and they're a 4H volunteer, 4H would cover them, is, is what we're anticipating.
That's great. I just want to be sure that that's the case, that they've got coverage.
Okay. Uh, the East Brookings Business Group meeting, this is not on my report, this came up since this was published, is Monday, December 8. This came up since this was published, is Monday, December 18th at 5:00. The social starts at 5:00 and then the meeting is at 5:30. This is out at Daktronics. I believe invitations are probably going to be coming out shortly, so with some more information. But to get that on your calendars...
Five o'clock?
December 18th at 5:00. In front of you, I handed out a couple of things this morning. The new South Dakota County's district map. We can no longer call ourselves eight county. That's what we've always kind of been referred to as the eight county meeting. Because we're now 10 counties. So our district voted to have Spink and Beetle counties join us as another district dissolved. We sort of took on a couple more. So Spink and Beetle counties are joining our district. Was there any discussion? I wasn't able to attend the meeting last Wednesday. Was there any discussion on bringing them into the circuit of conducting or holding a meeting? No?
We didn't talk about it. In fact, it was in the minutes that we had voted Beetle in, but not Spink, and Spink was there, so then we did the formal action of voting in Spink. But there was no discussion whatsoever about us traveling to their counties, so I...
And mostly I asked that only because Brookings County is slated to host in March. And so I wanted to make sure that that was still indeed, we should still plan on that.
Yeah. And I think on that agenda, as we set that agenda, we should put some discussion on whether or not they want to host, because...
Could we go back to the East Brookings meeting for a minute? When Al Kurtenbach talked about that meeting, he said the county does a little presentation there. Is that, are you going to be able to be there, Larry, to do that?
As of now, I can.
Okay, great. I just wanted you to have heads up.
And then the other thing in front of you was the letter that the Samuel Mortimer Cabin out at Oakwood is officially now on the National Register of Historic Places. And then just some upcoming dates. Tomorrow, the Conservation District Board of Supervisors is meeting. That agenda was included with my report. That's at 1:15 at their offices on Sixth Street. Thursday is the mayor's holiday celebration at McCrory Gardens Visitor Center. The 12th, next Tuesday, Leadership Brookings is having their forum next door in the community room at 10:00. I did hear from Commissioner Miller that she's able to attend. Ryan's gone. Anybody, any other commissioners planning to attend to come and speak to the group and just answer some questions? On the 12th?
I will if I'm back.
At 10:00.
You know, it's...
Possibly.
It's, I would encourage you to try to be there because it is advantageous to have more than one commissioner there. They ask a lot of questions.
They do. And there are a number of department heads that will be there as well. But I'd see if there's additional commissioners. And then after that, they're going to head over to the sheriff's office and tour the jail with Marty and Bert, so... The next day, on the 13th, next Wednesday, is our city, county, and state potluck. It's going to be up here in the break room, so bring a treat to pass and come join us. It's from 11:30 to 1:30. And then Monday and Tuesday, looking a little bit further down the road, the offices will be closed for the Christmas holiday. So that's all I have, unless you have any questions of me.
Okay. None left. Go back to our nine o'clock. Are we prepared? What do we...
I guess, Dick, can you just give a little explanation on the awards, how the application and what's involved?
Okay. This is an award that's handed out every year at the local roads conference, and it's an eight-state region. And it's sponsored by LTAP, which is Local Transportation Assistance Program, which is a federal program, and each state has their own association, so to speak. And so this You Show Me Award is given to the department that shows kind of an ingenious way of making use of not only their resources and manpower, but also try to keep it cost-effective and add to the productivity and efficiency of our operation. And Dennis is our fabricator, manufacturer, do-all person, and he does an absolutely fantastic job. If you've ever seen his work, you know it's second to none. He is absolutely remarkable with aluminum, stainless steel, cast, anything. He can put it together. So the rest of us always get to brainstorming and Dennis gets the finished product for us, and he does a wonderful job. And so that's why Dennis, unfortunately, remember, you couldn't make it out there because of the wedding in Peoria, so I accepted him then, but I felt it was only important that you get recognized and a big thank you for what you do for us.
Thank you.
And also, these two, since we won the region and the state, will be entered for the national contest also. So we're hoping for the best there, too. A good idea and a fantastic product.
On behalf of the county commission, we'd like to commend both the department and Dennis on receiving this award.
Got it? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's very nice. Thank you.
What happens at the national level? Is that, what would be his recognition at the national level? Another... Yes.
He's got to save some money. He does all the cages and the patrol cars.
Oh, really? Well, don't give his last name out because somebody might try to hire him away from us.
Okay, I guess we have a 9:30. I just will wait till 9:30 to do that. Second reading, a few minutes.
Thank you for coming in.
It's 9:30. It was under scheduled agenda items, item B. Second reading and public hearing of ordinance number 2017-04. An ordinance establishing the placement of four-way stop signs at the intersection of 32nd Street South and 22nd Avenue South. That was second reading. I'd like to open the public hearing. Any proponents would like to speak to this item? Is there any proponents that would like to speak to this item? Hearing none. Move on to opponents. Is there any opponents that would like to speak? Any opponents that would like to speak? Hearing none. Close the meeting. And move on to item three, action to approve ordinance number 2017-04. An ordinance establishing the placement of four-way stop signs at the intersection of 32nd Street South and 22nd Avenue South.
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we, signs themselves, obviously, this city, county, I think they're doing the same thing on their side. We have that one blinking part in the top there. Mile to the west, we have signs that are, are we looking at upgrading those to those flashing ones?
Yep.
Whatever you prefer. That's...
The city is, yes.
Okay. I think they want it.
So we'll be responsible for two. They'll be responsible for two of them?
Yep.
This is a very dangerous intersection. I am very, very happy that this is happening. And it has changed that intersection a great deal with the temporary ones.
I was going to stick with Stacy. Is city doing the same? They are. Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a 10 o'clock.
You guys are too fast for my agenda creation this week.
Deputy State's Attorney's report, we, do we have anything? We have no Deputy State's Attorney report. Move on to Commissioner reports and discussion. Correspondents received. Leanne, would you like to start?
On November 22nd and November 28th, the Deputy State's Attorney and Planning and Zoning Staff and I met and we worked on ordinances. We're moving forward with our review. On November 28th, I attended the tabletop at United Living Center. And again, Bob did a great job with that. It was very interesting. If we had, the scenario was a train collision where the railroad track is on Main. And if there was a chemical cloud because of what happened, how United Living Center would be evacuated. But the thought occurred to me, if we ever had an incident like that, that not only does that evacuate United Living Center, but it would evacuate this building and our courthouse and the police department and the sheriff's office and all of that. And I wonder now that we have another facility available, if we shouldn't be looking at that kind of emergency. I know we talk about different locations, but OAC might be something that we could be looking at for emergency use. That might just be something to have a conversation about in the event that this downtown center area where all of our facilities are are closed, if we need to move somewhere, would that be something to consider to be talked about in some of our planning? Then I attended the November 29th meeting with all of you, the eight county meeting, which is now 10 counties in Mottertown. And I know we decided not to talk about drainage at that meeting, but are we going to address the drainage issue ourselves again based on the conversation that we had with Representative Holly? Because I think we do need to have more conversations for Brookings County on the drainage issue. On November 30th, I went to the, I think, my last Swiftel advisory meeting. And I think the city has already published a change in their ordinance. That's what Tom Richter said at our meeting. And then we discussed at the meeting that the county would not next year have a liaison on that board and that our current county representative, whose turn runs through 2019, that her position would stay on for that time period. So that was all talked about. And that would be my report.
Commissioner Bartley?
All righty. On the 29th, I also attended the eight county meeting. And Luke from First District gave an overview of parliamentary procedure. So we had a good training session on parliamentary procedure. Also, on the 30th, we had a joint powers board meeting. And nothing real drastic come out of that, other than we'll try and fill the hole in the house over here if we can before winter sets in. We may be a little late already with the winter. It hit us. Then on the, let's see, what's that? December 1st, the farmstead over in White, a wall breaking ceremony instead of groundbreaking. They've done a lot of work already, but the group is taking the former White Care Center and is turning it into a multi-use facility with 12 apartments. They hope to have a restaurant, daycare, and a salon in there. Brookings Health System will have a clinic that will be up and operational by February. They also have space for a fitness center and also some other office spaces available. So they do have one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments out of the 12 that are available. It sounds like they've got two or three of them already rented. They're looking for other renters. It's a mixed-use facility. City of White is excited to have something done with that building rather than have it being torn down. It's a reuse of a facility that's been there. It's a well-constructed building, but they're completely tearing it apart and starting all over. So it works for them and their new uses. And that would, that would complete my report. Thank you.
All right. November 22nd, had a beta meeting. And they had their, they ended their fiscal year and what was it, say? Let me think here. It'd be October, or no, it's right before that, September. So at the end of September, they were up. Overall ridership was up 2,700 rides. They will be getting some more funding next year because of the increased ridership and their miles traveled. They will be getting some more funding next year because of the increased ridership and their miles traveled. And also the cost of their rides were down. So that was a good thing to hear for them too. They are, received a grant from Larson's for twenty-five thousand dollars for a new vehicle. I know they had put in requests to different places to try to get that, and Larson came up with that. And then February fourteenth is transit day in Pier. And so they will be heading out there to lobby legislators and everything, and so. If anybody's out there at that time, they'd certainly would like to, you know, meet with us and that kind of stuff, but. Anyway, that's. What's, what's been going on, and South Dakota Transit Providers, they, they did hire a lobbyist out there too, so they have people working with that, so. Very active. And a lot of good stuff going on. Like I said, received another grant and also had more money coming in, but ridership is up, so. Really trying to meet the needs of Brookings County and the city of Brookings, so. Also, on the twenty eighth, I had a meeting with. Tim Reed for, he's a OAC board member, and we were putting together the bylaws. Also had Sheriff Stanwick there, but he got called to an emergency, which is probably a little more important than our OAC bylaws, so. We let him go, and anyway, we're getting pretty close to presenting those to our. Our OAC board here, we'll be doing that. Our, our OAC meeting did get postponed from last night because of the weather, which was a very good decision considering five thirty to seven thirty, the visibility was not very good. And so we have moved that to Thursday the seventh at seven o'clock. And at that time, we'll present our first kind of rendition of our bylaws and take discussion and do all that kind of stuff, so. I think that's it, so, yep.
Mr. Miller?
On November twenty first, following our meeting, I went down and talked to Mike Struck in the city office. Concerning the signs for OAC. And he was going to get information from the city attorney on what the procedure would be for us to. Get a variance or whatever, so that we could backlight logos. On November twenty first also, we had our work session to determine what, what taxes to charge at BCOAC. And we had an archery range meeting. That meeting was long and following the meeting, we lost our chairman. So, we start over again on that. November twenty seventh, I had a meeting with the finance and our new director for the BCOAC. Concerning how he should handle the tax issues and numerous other things. On November twenty ninth, I went to the ten county meeting. And at that time, we voted Spink County in. November thirtieth, joint powers, Mike already covered probably the highlight there. Then I had domestic abuse, abuse at four. And one of the high points there was that two of the five adopter room, rooms have been adopted and are done. And it's my understanding that they are absolutely delightful, I've not been able to see them however, because. We have a lot of people in there, so when there, when there are people at the shelter, we cannot go back there. And on December first, I too went to the wall breaking ceremony. I just want to say that how proud I am of the imagination, the foresighted initiative. That people in our county have. This is a, this is a fantastic endeavor. And all we did was, was do a discretionary tax formula for them to try to spur economic development, and I. I wish that we could do more because I think that this is, they're going to be a leader, certainly in South Dakota. On what they're doing here, the, the mixed use and the reuse, the repurpose of this building. And so I'm really proud of that group for what they've done, and the apartments are really nice, they're nice sized and. It's a great venture, and I, I would like to say kudos to those people who are working on that project. Thank you very much for, for what you do, and once again, I have a feeling Brookings County will be watched closely for this project.
It was a great addition to the city of White, I mean, when the nursing home closed, a lot of jobs were lost up there, and hopefully this will. Bring some jobs back to the community and it was a shame to sit, see that empty, that building sit empty as long as it did. On the twenty seventh, did have an Otter Tail substation meeting, I was not able to attend. I was updated on it and it's moving forward, they had local review meeting. There was only one concern, and that was township road leading to the substation. And Commissioner from Mill County Gary Jaeger and Highway Superintendent Jamie Hints are working on the road issue up there, and I believe they'll. They'll be able to handle that and move forward with the substation. On the twenty eighth, got together with Vicky, SDSU and our bonding company, sat down and signed a lot of documents for the. Bond to move forward at SDSU. Timing was a factor. In doing so, I believe by the end of the week, they were actually using some of those funds already to pay some of those that were already coming forward. That evening, I attended the Ag appreciation banquet out at the Swiftel, and thanks to the commission assistant, I did give the welcome out there. Very well attended, it was full. Barry Dunn spoke and also VJ Smith spoke, and it was really a good meeting. On the twenty ninth, attended the Suvali. Ten county meeting. We were versed on parliamentary procedure, as coincidences followed our meeting a week ago, I don't know if that was on purpose, but. We, it was a good meeting. And that's all I have, so.
I just have a question either for you or for Stephanie, what's happening with the detention center committee, anything?
And that is on the. Nineteenth after commission, we'll have another meeting. Okay, we do have a. Ten o'clock?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Would it be possible, before we have Ms. Bren on the line, I just have some questions about our insurance that maybe Vicky and, and Stacy can answer, can we talk a little bit about our insurance? Since we have a little time?
I could try.
What, one question I had is, that policy, the beginning of it talked about boilers, do we have boilers anywhere?
The courthouse.
The courthouse is a boiler?
Yeah.
And what's our procedure, how often is, now, this is my third year, and I don't think I've ever seen this policy before or had this type of review, I don't remember us doing it like this before. And I, I appreciate doing it because it's, it was interesting to read through everything, but. How, how does our, our values get put into the document, who handles that, how does that get updated and how often?
It gets updated as we, anytime we have anything added, anything purchased. Whether it's equipment, whether it's a building, it all gets added, Laura works with these folks to get it added to our policy immediately. So each department is responsible for getting that information to Laura if they buy a new vehicle. Things of that nature.
So like, we have a value for this building, a value for the courthouse, that type of thing, when do those values get updated and how does that get done?
That gets done, I believe that gets done annually. With, with them, I, they come. They come and do a review.
So the insurance company comes up with the value?
Yes, they come and do reviews. I know some, I don't know that how extensive it all, all is, but I know last year, there was a gentleman that came up and went pretty much line. Item by item by item with Laura and got things updated, so.
The deductibles and this, if this is a question for Ms. Bren, that's fine, but we have two hundred and fifty dollar deductible on a lot of stuff, that's a really low deductible. Would, do you know, would it make a difference in our premium, are we mandated to the two hundred and fifty by some statute?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not that, yeah, that might be, that'd be a question for her.
And then my last question is, there were two dwellings that were excluded, one in White and one in Sinai? What do, what do we have for dwellings?
Dwellings?
Yes.
Those are, those properties that we have taken tax deed to, I believe that we have to cover them, but.
Your shops too.
Yeah, we have. But these, the, the shops are different, I think, this is. There's a property in White, and I think there, isn't there a property in Sinai as well, Vicky?
The property in Sinai, we did sell, so maybe we better check and make sure that it's off up there. But we have a property in Bruce and we have a property in White that the county took tax deed, so we always, when we take tax deed, it's on our insurance. Basically for liability until we sell it.
And we don't, so there's no comprehensive if, if it burns down, because they're excluded on the building, and that's, we don't care about that coverage?
Right, right. And like in Bruce, it's an empty lot and, you know, so.
Yeah, and now, the one in Sinai would have been a blessing had that burned, so, I mean, they're not worth anything, basically.
I guess going through that list. I think we probably should go through the equipment list again, how many motor, we don't, do we have seven motor graders? There's a snow blower apparently, when it was surplus, didn't get taken off of there also. Snow blower. Got a seventy-nine Wildcat snow blower.
Yeah, that, we have just one snow blower.
But that's not the.
That's what?
That's not the one, I mean, on this list here. It's not even number three. We surplus that a long time ago.
Yeah, the Wildcat's the one that got replaced by.
Right.
Fall, no. Isn't it a snow goal?
Then we got three oh six caterpillars. Motor graders. But I just.
We only have, we only have one cat blade and.
Right, I mean, they just need to go through that list again. A few things on there, I don't know if that would lower our premium or not, but. No, but they should.
And the resource center's still on there, but I just figured it hadn't caught up with what was going on yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, the OAC's on there though.
The OAC is on there, yes.
Do you know?
I just noticed that because I knew that.
Sorry, this building was valued like ten million something. Is that our share of this building, or is that the whole cost of this building? Value?
We, the county has the building on our policy, the whole building. When we do our bill, we ask for reimbursement for the forty-eight percent back from the city, so. We have to do some fancy, you know, figuring on, and bits and pieces of this, some of the shared stuff that we have with the city. Because we cover it under our policy.
So we pay the full cost?
We pay the full cost and get reimbursed back from the city, yep.
And I don't know, Vicky, if, if it's possible for you to look up where you're sitting, what do we pay for a premium per year for this policy?
Do you have that, that you can check on, I don't have, my.
Don't have access, I was just curious, I couldn't remember.
We just paid, I don't know if I have a copy of. Let me see if I have a copy of that bill actually.
And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, but if we're not mandated for those extremely low deductibles, that might be something that we should consider changing. Let's ask that question, I don't know. We've nev, we had a claim when the, the highway building got damaged. Our premiums a hundred and thirty thousand?
Do we have a, do we have a claims experience as far as our exposure when we're talking about deductible paying two hundred and fifty dollars per event? Do we have any idea how many events we have in an annual year?
Right.
I.
In other words, how much, how, how many two hundred and fifty dollars have we had to pay?
I don't, I, I don't know. This is the, this is the coverage breakdown. It's really, the total cost is about one forty, one hundred and forty thousand five hundred, and then due to. The loss control, like we do our loss control, safety and loss awards, that's, that's saving us.
I think the loss ratio reflects your, doesn't that reflect your claims or?
Yeah, yes, that loss ratio, loss control, that reflects low claims, so we get those credits back.
But we don't have any record of our claims experience for the last year. We do have. We get, we get that report because we did better than normal on ours when they did our safety audit and stuff like that. Basically, we only had. One claim, I think, in two thousand seventeen. That was just a few weeks ago, and then I don't think we had any others.
When you say we, you mean the highway department or?
Yes, just the highway department, but like what Mike was asking, I. I get a summary thing that shows, and it gives a percentage of what. Realization we had on all these different areas, if I'm thinking of the same report, it came from Kirkus himself or. Public. But I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I haven't seen.
Maybe I'm talking about something totally different, I don't know.
I can, I can look.
Yeah, I haven't seen the report either, but it would be any of the vehicles, like if the windshields. Some of Marty's have went in for like cracks or whatever that they fix, or any vehicles that were hurt. And I think we've had a couple sheriff's vehicles on that. But that's the only claims that I know of that have been paid.
In two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
And, and the two hundred and fifty dollar item, I guess the question, and we can ask her this when she's online, that was on buildings. And I'm thinking, why would we have a two hundred and fifty dollar deductible on buildings? You know, if you have a window broke on a building, we could pay. You know, if you have a window broke on a building, we could pay for the window. And I think it's a thousand dollars on this building, if I remember right. This building has a thousand dollar deductible, again, which is pretty low.
Right. Cause I believe each. Cause I believe each, each year they come up and do a basically review with each department and give their recommendations and their findings. It's done annually.
I don't know if that's done annually or every couple, I don't know if Kirkus does his loss walkthrough every year. I think it's every couple, three years. Yeah.
The physical one where they come up.
We did have the big fire in the Quonset. That wasn't very.
You dial in her? Uh, it's ten o'clock, Lynn Bren, Director of Member Services with the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance. Liability insurance review. We'll be contacting her by telephone.
This is Lynn, may I help you?
Hi Lynn, it's Stacy Stephenson.
Hi, how are you?
Good, you are in the meeting already, piped in.
Perfect.
So, we can go ahead and get started, just let me know when you want me to turn pages and stuff.
Okay, perfect, um, can everybody?
Yep, yep.
Okay, perfect, um, so I'll just start and just give you a little bit of background. Um, I'm Lynn Bren and of course you can't see me and I didn't say that, but, um, I've met some of you. I, before becoming the Director of Member Services in April of this year, I was the Claims Manager at Claims Associates. And Claims Associates is our vendor that does the claims. And I worked with Claims Associates for sixteen years prior to coming over here. So I've got some good history with the pool. Um, I helped write some of the liability stuff and then have been working with underwriting prior to coming over here on the property document. So I'm familiar with the coverage documents and stuff like that. Um, so I've got some familiarity with the pool and stuff like that. The pool, so you guys kind of have a little bit of background, the pool was formed in nineteen eighty-seven and Brookings County has been a member for almost as long as the pool has been in, in existence. It was about eight months after the pool started that the county joined in, um, in August of nineteen eighty-seven. So you've, you've got thirty years under your belt, um, as far as history with the pool. So certainly familiar with benefits, um, includes loss control surveys that happen every three years. Your last loss control survey was done in twenty sixteen, so you can do for another update in twenty nineteen. And the reason those loss control visits are important, not only to recognize some issues that maybe need to be fixed, but it also plays into loss control costs that you guys see on your renewal, um, contribution amounts and things like that. Our loss control, um, program, you have access to online training for not only your law enforcement agency, but also some administrative and other safety training. Um, all of that is available online through either, it's now L E R M G or FirstNet Learning. And then our law enforcement, um, agencies have access to policies and procedures through L E R M G. And our administrative folks have access to some sample policies and procedures through FirstNet and also through, um, the risk pool. We have access to the municipal league's, um, sample policies and procedures also. Also, one of the benefits that's been in the pool, again, you are aware of this, is you get property rentals every four years. Um, you had one done this year in twenty seventeen, so the next one won't be due until twenty twenty-one. The reason we find those important is to make sure that any property that we cover, um, we just want to make sure that it is appropriately covered because your contributions are based on property values. Make sure that you're not covering too much or too little, um, and then also again, just recognizing things that maybe should be covered that aren't. So, we will type into the booklet that I sent along. We've got the cover page with our logo. Um, your coverage term is September twenty-five, um, seventeen to eighteen. So you have gone through the renewal process already. So we'll start with property. Um, before we talk about property, there is a organizational chart in your packet that gives you all of the information about the people involved with the administration of the pool. Um, may be aware, prior to, um, I believe it was one one twenty-fourteen, the pool actually had a member duty administration. And so they took the underwriting, member services and the general administration of the pool in-house. So you can see that currently Judy Payne is the executive director. Um, Dave Feisley is coming on board, he's actually here with us already. But after Judy has fully retired, then Dave will be, um, the main executive director. But he's kind of our apprentice right now. Um, and we're excited to have him on board. Previously, he was the city attorney for the city of Sioux Falls, so he'll bring some valuable knowledge with him, um, to that room. Director of Underwriting, Peterson, and then you see myself Lynn Bren as the Director of Member Services. Our underwriter, Patrick Nichols, will handle a lot of the day-to-day changes, adds, things like that. And then Jerry Cranbeck is my partner, um, in Member Services. If I'm not available, he can help answer any questions, um, that you have or if you need quotes on things, he'll help gather that information and pass it along. Um, the organizational chart gives you the information about Claims Associates, which is our claims handling administrator. The Safety Benefits does our loss control, property evaluations, things like that. And it shows you that, um, all of the investments of the pool are handled locally in Sioux Falls with First National Bank. And then the pool, like you, covers and protects its assets. So we use real insurance coverage and our broker is Alliance Insurance Services. And our general counsel for the pool is Robbie Anderson, um, out of Pierre, and he's been with the pool for many, many years. So that's a great sheet, um, to use, it's flat. So I also hand out the next page, kind of a who's guide, just gives you the quick access information to, if you've got questions, these are kind of a cheat sheet of who you might want to reach out to first. Um, so then we'll go to the next page. Should be looking at the governmental property agreement, this is your declarations page. It just shows the forms that we use to refer to, if, if there's a claim, um, those are the forms that attach to your document and it shows your effective date. The next page is your schedule of coverages, um, actually that is the next two pages. Um, and I would note to you that technically it's two pages for the scheduled coverages, but I stuck in there a article for you about boiler and equipment breakdown. Um, that gives you some information about if you have boilers that need to be inspected, that's how you go through the inspection process. But your schedule of coverages, um, basically explains to you what your coverage limit is because our property coverage for buildings and personal property is a blanket coverage. What that means is if there's a loss to any one building, the maximum that would be paid would be the blanket limit that are showed on this page as opposed to the individual property number shown on your statement of value. Um, similar with personal property, it's a blanket coverage. Um, so even say a building is destroyed and, and the contents listed at that location is only ten thousand, you actually have up to that three point four million dollars to, um, provide coverage for any loss of property, um, at a covered location. You've got the equipment coverage, which is why you have news articles. Um, we'll go to, so the, the news articles there and then you skip to the next page for the scheduled coverages, which shows page three down in the lower right-hand corner. That just gives you more information about coverage limits and deductibles that would apply. We go to page four of this property section and it shows LCPA sublimits of the governmental property agreement. What this is, is these are the limits that are afforded to the risk pool. Um, so if there is a loss, like if Brookings County is involved in a storm and there are multiple buildings damaged, you have coverage for all of your buildings under one storm. Well, the risk pool enjoys that same situation with a reinsurance. So if we have multiple members involved in one storm, so say the city of Brookings and Brookings County and Cottington County, then we have one claim with multiple locations, cause each one of our members is a location. So, this special coverage limit per loss, this gives us our risk pool limits. If there's only one member involved in a loss, you have access to these limits unless there's a member limit stated. So like under earnings, there's ten million dollars per loss for the pool, but each member is actually limited to one million dollars per loss. So hopefully we don't have to really deal with these because that's a pretty catastrophic loss that would, um, get us to these limits. But it's something that I like to point out, definitely you're aware. The next pages, pages five through seven are your building and content statement of value. Your buildings are covered by replacement cost, again, it's a blanket coverage. The deductible is $250 and replacement cost coverage means that if a building is totally destroyed, you will be paid for the replacement cost of the building once it's actually replaced. And the most you would get is comparable to what you had before. So, for example, if, if location one twenty-nine, the, the material storage shed was destroyed, you would receive up to the replacement cost of a similar material storage shed. Say you decided you wanted to put that money towards a new community fund or something like that, that fund, we would just cap it at what it would cost to replace the, the storage shed with, with a light time and quality building. And then also your contents are listed, so there are locations that have contents. Um, so if there is damage there and, and there's damage to those contents, then they would be picked up. Um, it looks like there's maybe only a couple buildings that don't have contents. And it's probably something that we, it's either not a building because we've got some parking lot fixtures, light fixtures, or it's a location that we just don't have anything there except maybe some sand and stuff like that. So we'll skip to page eight, under this section, and this is your ADP hardware coverage and it's hard, and software. And this is pages eight through ten. Basically, this coverage affords some increased coverage that isn't available just as a regular content. So, we put items here like our voting machines, partially because the voting machines don't always stay at a specific location. We maybe store them at the courthouse, but maybe they go out to schools or churches or things like that. So this provides some extra coverage for those items, but also provides coverage for things like, um, onsite power sources and also some virus protection as well. Those coverages, um, are available, these are limits, so the most that you would be paid is the limit if they were totally destroyed. And then there are items with a two percent deductible and some with a thousand dollar deductible. Any questions so far? Okay, hearing none. I will, and just yell and, and speak up, if there's a question on a page that you want to talk about, that's totally fine. So page eleven of this property section is your fine art schedule. So you have several, um, pieces of art that look like came through you with the, um, when you took over the OAC, cause it looks like they're all associated with the OAC. So this is a per, per item and there's a two percent deductible that would apply, um, for damages to any one of those items. Now, if there's multiple items damaged or, or stolen or what have you, then it's one deductible that applies per occurrence, not per item. Going to page twelve, and this is actually page twelve to fifteen, this is your mobile equipment. Um, some of your items are covered at actual cash value, which means if they're totally destroyed, they would be paid based on the age and condition of the property at the time of the loss. And that replacement cost value, which we've already discussed, and some is at stated value. So it would be replacement cost up to the amount stated on the coverage document. Um, also, this group is the endorsement for your law enforcement dog Buddy. And this is his own special endorsement that talks about, um, how Buddy's coverage is applied. And I think that actually is a couple pages back of the full endorsement, which outlines the Buddy's coverages. But, um, so these, these are pieces of equipment, usually payload, tractors, mowers, things like that, that don't stay at a scheduled location, purchase to service, um, say for mowing tissues and things like that. Um, but they're also not vehicles, so they, we need to schedule them somewhere to make sure that we've got them covered appropriately. The next page we'll talk about is page sixteen, that is the employee dishonesty or our enhanced crime coverage. So in twenty fifteen, the South Dakota Municipal League worked with the legislature and got it passed, got a bill passed so that our employee dishonesty coverage, and there is others out there, but our employee dishonesty coverage is written broad enough so that it satisfies the statutory bonding requirements for employee dishonesty. Now, notary bonds are still required because those are a performance type bond, but this does offer blanket coverage, so it's all of your employees, um, not just your, um, auditors and, and people who have access to your financial, um, information. It's anybody who is an employee. Um, I have attached with this an article that basically reiterates what I just said. There's a million dollars per occurrence, there's no aggregate. And what that means is if you have multiple employee dishonesty claims, you have access to that full million dollar limit, regardless of the number of claims that you have. Some packages have an aggregate limit, which means that every loss you have actually erodes the total amount of coverage that would be afforded at that particular one. So that news article, it just explains to you again what the crime coverage does for you. Um, hopefully, again, you never have to use it, but, um, you've got it there and it renews with your coverage documents. Going on to the next, is pages thirteen through nineteen of the property section. And this actually will bring us, um, to the end of the statements of values, I believe. This is your vehicle schedule, you have your vehicles covered at actual cash value with a one thousand dollar comp, one thousand dollar collision deductible. So any vehicle that is listed here has coverage for auto physical damage. All vehicles owned by the county have auto liability coverage. We don't list them out unless you want auto physical damage coverage. You have access to coverage for newly acquired automobiles, which means if you purchase a car or some other type of automobile after you set your renewal up, it's automatically covered under the newly acquired, um, up until the next renewal, um, statement is, is submitted. So just make sure, if you buy a new car, we don't, um, have any issue with that, but there is some of that coverage there if you, um, have any issues or buy a new car. The next two pages are endorsements, which basically say that we own, and it's two pieces of property, there are two dwellings that were taken, um, are, are now owned by the, the county. This endorsement's that we don't provide any property coverage for those, but there is liability coverage because liability automatically extends to any properties that the county owns. So those two, next two pages are just endorsements saying that, recognizing you own it, but we're only providing liability. The next page is a general endorsement, which basically says that the city of Brookings and Brookings County jointly own the government, the city-county government center that, um, basically, this is our claims folks, that if there's a loss to that building, that they need to also consider, um, including the city of Brookings on any payments that are made because they may have an interest in that as well. The next page is a general endorsement. So what happens is you purchase property midterm and you call us and let us know, an endorsement is generated midterm showing that you've purchased property or you've, sometimes this will actually show you've deleted property. Um, but this is our claims folks know that property was purchased and that it should be covered effective a certain day. And then any deductibles and if there's any special coverage notes for that item, it goes on this endorsement. At renewal time, these items will be added to your statement of value, so then you'll automatically see it on the list as a whole. And then that next page is the special endorsement that I talked to you about, um, where Buddy is specifically listed. He's got a stated value of seventy-five hundred dollars, five hundred dollar deductible. And then it outlines some exclusions as to situations where we wouldn't pay for, um, injury or damage to Buddy. Then, so that's a two-page endorsement. The next endorsement is a general endorsement for covered property. So if you purchase or become the owner of some property, say through a tax deed or something like that, the coverage document does offer some temporary coverage for miscellaneous unnamed unscheduled locations. So if we have a loss to a piece of property and the county didn't realize it wasn't scheduled, this will pick it up and give you some, some coverage for that and just alerts us that that needs to be added to the statement of values. Okay, and the last endorsement that we'll talk about. And the last endorsement that we'll talk about for property coverage is the limited terrorism coverage. So there is no coverage in the world that will provide full-on war and terrorism coverage. So this just basically explains that we do have some limited terrorism coverage in place and updates the definition of war and biological, chemical terrorism. So that's a two-page endorsement. So any questions on property? Okay, we'll move on to liability. Again, liability, the same effective dates for your liability coverage. In 2016, the SCA rewrote their liability coverage document. It went from a 43-page document down to about a 10-page document. When we did that, we combined, we do separate out different lines of coverage within the liability. So your public officials liability, your general liability, your law enforcement liability, and your auto liability were all under one document. And some interesting discussions about how coverage would apply to each one of those types of claims. So what we did when we rewrote the liability document was simplified it in saying, we're pulling out auto liability and giving it its own coverage document. Public officials and general liability simply become governmental liability. And law enforcement liability also is governmental liability, but it will have its own deductible. So you can see on this first page, on page one of two, on your memorandum of governmental liability coverage declarations page, you have $1 million in coverage. There are some sublimits that apply. So there's medical expense coverage limited to $5,000 per occurrence. This medical expense coverage is written as an excess coverage, so if someone flips an envelope outside of the courthouse, for example, the county may not have done anything wrong, but there is access to out-of-pocket medical expenses that can help them pay for expenses that there is no insurance coverage to people, and they would just need to submit a claim. It's limited, again, it's excess over any other payer. It is only available for one year incurred and reported to claims associates. So again, it's a pretty limited coverage there. There is some injunctive relief coverage that is right now limited to $25,000. We have some claims with the county for this injunctive relief. Basically, the, the main type of claim that I saw using the injunctive relief coverage is appeals of county decisions, more conditional use permit, FOs, things like that. So that's where that coverage comes in. And the injunctive relief actually does have a $5,000 deductible per occurrence when we use that. So how claims pay that is they pay out $30,000 for defense and adjusting expenses, and then they collect back $5,000 to show a net incurred of $25,000. The next sublimit is broad legal defense. So in the event that there is no coverage available for whatever reason, the county denies coverage, not liability, coverage for a particular claim, then the county can actually obtain some reimbursement for legal things incurred to defend that uncovered claim by submitting those under the broad legal defense fund coverage. The final sub, property of others, and it's $100,000. The only time the county would really need to move this coverage is if we're renting space from someone, and included in the lease agreement is a requirement that the county is responsible for fire liability. So if there is a no-fault fire, the lease agreement would say that the county is responsible to pay damages because of that fire. This coverage will help pick up some of those expenses. The next section here is pages, the deductible section. You have a $0 deductible for your liability coverage other than, we talked about injunctive relief and the employment-related claim. We will talk about the employment practices hotline because that will help eliminate that employment-related deductible. We'll go to page two of your schedule of coverages. The only line that we really pay attention here is the law enforcement liability line, which is the second line, that you have $1 million for your law enforcement liability coverage with a $2,000 deductible. Otherwise, the rest of them are addressed, they're included in your limit of coverage. The next page is technically the third page of your schedule, just continues to discuss what endorsements are attached to your liability document. So we'll go to the next page then, which is a two-page document that talks about the employment practices hotline. So as part of your partnership to the school, you have access to the employment practices hotline, and what that does is it offers some assistance with employment-related questions. So we would ask that you rope in your state's attorney and call the hotline if you have any questions related to things such as higher disciplinary action, FMLA, discrimination, harassment, all of those types of things, and it, they think those not limited to those topics should be addressed through the hotline. So if you call the hotline, you'll be referred to counsel, and then you will work with counsel, and they will help you work through your, your employment-related situation. If a claim arises because of that employment-related situation and you've called the hotline and followed advice of counsel, that $5,000 deductible will be waived regardless of the outcome of the claim. So literally, a minute call could save you $5,000. Just call the hotline, maybe it'll turn into nothing, but if something arises, then you've called the hotline and you've, you've taken care of that. So after the two-page, it's just the endorsement to the coverage document that basically says the same thing I just told you, that you have a $0 deductible for other than employment-related claims under governmental liability, and of course, that doesn't include your law enforcement. And then employment-related claims is the $5,000, but again, you can waive that by calling the hotline and following advice of counsel. We'll go to the next, and this is the tenant exclusion endorsement. Basically, what this endorsement tells us is that the SCA is providing liability coverage only to our member and not to any tenant. A particularly sticky situation is if one of the properties we take in on a tax deed happens to be a land loan. We don't want to be responsible for the people who live in that property. We don't want to provide liability coverage for them. We only are providing liability coverage for the county employees, boards, things like that, but not any tenants of our owned property. The next endorsement is moral obligation to pay coverage. That coverage is based on the situation where, say, you've pulled in a claim to the associates and they decide that there is no liability, so no payment should be made. The county feels that, you know, it, it really is the right thing to help these people out. What this endorsement does, this gives you access to some reimbursement. It allows you to make a payment to a party for any claim for which there was no other liability payment reported. As long as the payment made by the county doesn't exceed $1,000, you can receive 75% of that payment back. You can use this coverage. We would just ask that you be mindful about how you use this coverage because if you use it for, say, Lynn comes and her claim was denied, but you want to make a payment and you give Lynn $1,000, but then Lindsay comes a week later and you don't pay her, and then say, you know, Chad comes and he wants to be paid, you don't want to set a precedence and you don't want to set yourself up for any type of discrimination claim or anything like that. So the coverage today, absolutely use it if you'd like to, but just be mindful of, you don't want to set any precedence and things like that. The property of others on the next page, this is the fire legal liability that we talked about earlier with the $100,000 dollar limit, so we've already talked about that. The next page, it changes limits of liability. So prior to 15, like I said, we had different lines of coverage specifically parceled out in our coverage documents. Prior to 15, you had a $2,500 deductible for an official's liability, and that would be a key situation, say a county made a decision and someone's asking for money damages, things like that. So it just tells our claim folks that there was a deductible that would have applied prior to 9/25/16. And then prior to 9/25/05, you had a $1,000 deductible for that situation. So it really doesn't impact the county too much, but it helps our claim folks if there's a claim that comes out of the woodwork from a few years ago. The last little bit that I have for you under the regular liability, one is a news article that talks about cyber liability coverage. And that's, and then also a brochure, sorry, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, and a brochure about special events coverage. The special events coverage is important to be aware of. If you have locations or properties that you are allowing people to rent, especially now with your OAC, I know there's some space in there for people to rent for meetings and parties and things like that, you'll just want to make sure that your facilities' use agreements have appropriate language so that we are not accepting liabilities for those hosts, only for our own county. And also, there's two entities listed in the brochure where people can go and get covered for themselves. So if they need to have a party, we would like for them to have coverage to protect their own liability. Some private homeowners coverage will extend, but in most cases, it will not. So they can, these are two companies that we've worked with to provide special events coverage, and then through that, they can add the county right away as an additional insured. That will help you because if there is a claim paid, then you're defended by that host's liability, and it won't come back and impact like your loss ratio and things like that with the risk pool. The next article is the cyber liability coverage. Cover is automatically provided by the risk force. There is a limit of $350,000 coverage here. So regardless of the number of claims you have, the most that would be paid under cyber liability would be $350,000. This helps you figure out what to do next if you have a breach. Do you need to notify anybody? Now, South Dakota does not have a statute which requires notification, but it's not based on the state where the incident happened. The notification is based on the person's home state. And so some of the members like Brookings and Brookings County that have many students who come from out of state, they don't actually declare residency. So if we have a breach and they're in our system for some reason, and our system is breached, we may have a student to notify them because their home state requires notification. So the cyber liability coverage really will help look at, okay, who, what are our duties to inform, how do we inform them, what other obligations do we have? Unfortunately, it's not a matter of if, it seems to be a matter of when. The last part that we'll talk about is auto liability, and this is super quick. This is for all of your owned autos that you may be operating, it's your regular auto liability coverage. You have a $1 million per accident. There is some auto med pay coverage. This med pay coverage is dollar one coverage, so it's not excess, and it's for anybody who is not an employee who is injured in an auto accident. So this also would apply to inmates who are being transported if, say, one of our officers hits a deer while transporting an inmate and that inmate is injured. Those medically necessary expenses related to the auto accident may be turned in for medical auto payment coverage under this, this coverage portion. There is a maximum of $25,000 per accident for those medical expenses, and those also are limited to one year incurred and reported from the date of injury. The sublimit there is $50,000 per accident and $100,000, or per person, $50,000 per accident, $100,000 per accident for uninsured and underinsured motorists coverage. This is coverage that our employees would have access to if they are inured in a not at fault accident. It just offers them another avenue of recovery, keeping in mind that those employees are already covered under work comp for their injuries sustained in an accident which occurs during work time. So there is no deductible on your auto liability, and in your second page, it shows that there's no special endorsements attached to your auto liability coverage. And that's pretty much what I have to talk about as far as coverage unless you guys have any questions, comments.
Make sure you turn your mics on in order for her to hear you.
I have a couple of questions. You want me to start?
Go ahead.
Is that okay? All right, starting, this is LeAnn Pierce, okay? Starting with the automobile coverage, the $1 million per accident. So if there is an accident and three people in a vehicle that's not a county vehicle are injured, the total coverage that's provided to the three people injured is $1 million, no matter what the injuries were?
Correct. Right, yep, $1 million per occurrence. So regardless of the number of claims or people involved in any one accident, $1 million is your limit. And we can, if the county is interested, we can quote you a higher limit. That's entirely up to you.
That, that would be one of the things that I, I myself think we should discuss is what our liability coverage on, on that is because that's low. The next question that I had had to do with deductibles.
Okay.
And we have on our buildings a $250 deductible. Is, is that standard for counties? Is that a set deductible that all counties have, or is that something, if we raised our deductible, that we could reduce our premium?
You, you can slightly raise your deductible. There would be some change in contribution. Let me, I'm sitting at my desk. I actually had another county ask this, so I can give you an example based on, based on what the numbers were, the differences in contribution, because they also had a 250 deductible on their property. Let me find them here. Bear with me one second. So this is about the only benefit I can tell you that you'll get from me not actually doing this, because I have my computer up and I'm completely running here. Um, okay. So the, so this county, they have a 250 deductible on their contribution for property coverages, and this is based on the value that they're covering. Contribution was $11,219. The difference to go to a $10 deductible is only, is $10,034. So they're saving less than $1,000 a year to have a significantly higher deductible. And you, it would take, you are not going to recognize the savings because if you have one claim and you pay the $10,000 deductible, you've, you've paid that contribution savings 10 times. So to save $1,000, you have to pay an additional 900 and, or $9,750. So the deductible doesn't play a huge part into your contribution amount.
And then my next question is, back on page 133, where we were talking about terrorist acts.
Sure, terrorism.
Mm-hmm. If we had an active shooter in our building and property was, was damaged, this says there, there would be no coverage whatsoever for that. Is that correct?
Um, let me, that's a good question. And I haven't read this updated coverage check or this updated endorsement recently. So let me, so that would be considered an active terrorism, and there is some terrorism coverage.
Pardon me, there is or is not?
There is. There's technical terrorism excluded, but property damage due to the active, like you said, the active shooter, say, would be covered.
That is covered.
Yep, the property damage, yes. So if they damage some of the brick or what have you, I would say that yes, that would be covered under the terrorism because it's not full-out war and it's not biological or chemical.
And I think that probably answers the questions that I had.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions for Lynn? Sheriff Marty.
Lynn, it's Marty Stanwyk, the sheriff.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, how are you?
I'm doing well.
Just a quick question, and I'm, you know, I have SDSU interns or other college interns that ride sometimes 13 weeks and also high school. I don't always list them every time, but they're, they're covered, aren't they? When I have a 13-week SDSU intern or another college intern, should I be listing them specifically?
Well, now, here's the deal. I don't do work comp, so you're going to want to talk to Brad Wilson at, at Insurance Benefits for the work comp section. to Brad Wilson at at um insurance benefits for the work comp section. But those interns, as long as they meet the definition of a covered party, which is anybody who is a volunteer, an employee, um or someone working, you know, if if the county recognizes them as, okay, they're under our control and 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 they're part of our program, then they're going to be a covered party. So liability-wise, we would pick them up, but for themselves, like if you want them covered under your work comp, then you need to talk with the um insurance benefits with the work comp fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Would you happen to know on the automobile coverage, if we were to raise that amount per occurrence, how that would impact our premium?
What I can do is have Underruth give me a couple of quick quotes and I can send them over to Stacy and she can share that with you. Um I can probably have that done maybe by the end of the day today or possibly tomorrow at the latest.
Pardon me?
Should we get a quote on, I know you had mentioned-
So if you-
Hi, this is Ryan Krogman, Commissioner. As long as you, I guess you're getting quotes and stuff and looking at deductibles, I I still think two hundred and fifty dollars is really low.
Okay.
For deductible, is there, if we were to do something like five thousand dollars, I mean, the one you talked to, the cost was only is one tenth of what we pay and I'm just wondering if there, you know, for the amount that we have for insurance, if that deductible and the number of items that we have under, if that would make a bigger difference.
Sure, so what I will do is I will have quotes done on property at different deductible stages so you can see what the deductible is versus what your contribution will be. And then I'll also do the same for liability and I'll I'll give you a few different options so you can see what the contribution is for the million, two million, three million, stuff like that, so you can then look at and see if you want to make any changes.
Sounds great.
Do you want just auto liability or do you want full government liability quotes as well for liability?
From my perspective, I don't know what everybody else thinks, the issue with automobile liability is, is that if there are claims in excess of a million, which if you had multiple people injured in an accident, there could be, it isn't that those people wouldn't get paid those extra amounts, it's just that would come out of our budget as opposed to the insurance and so that insurance is is for our benefit. I don't know that we need that kind of bump up for other things, everybody might have an opinion on that, but for automobile coverage, I don't think we have enough.
Okay, I will just, I will have Underruth just quote me the auto liability increase limit.
Anything else that you guys have questions for her?
Okay.
All right, thank you Lynn.
Okay, thank you and I'm sorry again, I couldn't actually be there in person, but the roads were a little sketchy this morning.
Yes, yes, they were.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you guys need any, no, otherwise I'll get started on these quotes and have them over to Stacy just as soon as possible.
Sounds good, thank you, we'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye now.
Okay. I believe we've covered everything, haven't we?
I think so, yeah.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.